Seven o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Mr. Board, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to be applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
On to public comment. Policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Speakers not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Coleman?
No.
Thank you. All right, on to reports. The district administrator's report.
Okay, I have three things for the board and public. First of all, board members, there is a special buildings property and transportation committee meeting this Wednesday, starting at 5:30, and that will commence at the Richland Center Primary School main office. And then, we will do a walk through of the primary school, then head over to the intermediate school, and if time allows, finish up over at the partner school. Okay, so 5:30 on Wednesday, the 27th, starting at, excuse me, starting at the primary school. You will not be able to park on the big parking lot, so you will need to park in front of what used to be the bustling. Okay? Okay, and then, we have students coming a week from tomorrow, September 2nd, is our first day of school. Crazy exciting, and it's great to see all of our staff back in the buildings and getting a chance to interact with them. And it will be equally exciting to see our students coming back next Tuesday. So, all of our buildings will be full at that point. With that, the third reminder then is mostly for our public, but the board is aware as well. There will be a significant change in traffic patterns, not only from September 2nd to this week, all right, but this school year compared to previous school years. Because all of our buses are now going to be at each location, primary school, intermediate school, or high school, in some order, as opposed to the waves, that's going to change traffic flows, okay, than what the public is used to. And so, I would encourage all public members to just engage in a lot of patience during these first couple of weeks, be courteous on the road, and make sure that they're allowing ample time for themselves, as well as our buses, to get our students to and from schools safely. Okay? Any questions from the board regarding that, or? All right, thank you so much.
Is there a motion to approve the prayer media minutes of August 11th, 2025? Motion made by Mr. Billings, is there a second? Second, Mr. Miller, discussion. Mr. Millings?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, on to financial items, the approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I approve, I move to approve the statement of cash dated August 21st, 2025, and approve community first bank of general checking account checks number 87479-87497, and ACH number 252603537-252603581, and 202500021-202500026, for a net total of $1,099,198.99. This is for the purpose of general operating policy of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Troxell. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to point out or add?
Yeah, a few things to point out tonight. If you look at page four, this is probably generally a smaller amount of invoices, but the debt service payments are included in this one, to the tune of about $150,000, which brings us up to that $1 million that Mr. Miller just mentioned. You can see some larger dollar values on page four. $295,000 of that is a principal payment on our 2025 debt service, and then, the remainder, $552 is interest payments on our three other debts, the 2024 issue, the 2016 issue, and then, the 2020 liability. So, all total, 847 debt service payments. Second thing to point out is on page five, about three-quarters of the way down there, there is something that says, "Ain't Counting New Teacher Project" for about $7,000, about $8,000. I remember that was something that was discussed at the board level maybe about a year ago in talking with Mrs. Johnson. We've actually decided to leave that because we've taken a lot of that information, created some of our own resources, so that dollar value is actually going to be refunded to us. And then, finally, on page seven, about half the way down there, we have some payments for Skyward, about $52,000, it's a larger dollar amount, but Skyward is our internal software service, it's just the lifeblood that we live on, so those are some of our annual fees.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, discussion. Mrs. Scher?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to 6B, the review of the 2025-26 draft budget.
Mr. Bosworth has presented the draft budget, I believe, one other time at the board level, maybe twice, but certainly a couple of different times at the budget development committee, so this is an opportunity for the entire board to hear the latest updates. So, go ahead, Mr. Bosworth.
Sure. So, if everybody is able to open that document that's attached to that agenda item with the PDF there, 2025 local budget document, we'll just kind of go through this in chunks. First section there, Fund 10 revenues, so there's three columns, there's a 23-24 actual, 24-25 proposed budget, we're still working on some 24-25 actual numbers, those are yet to come, but we do have the last year's budget in there, and then, this year's proposed budget, so you can kind of see some history. So, the first section there, Fund 10 revenues, those are going to be very similar to what they were last year and the year before, there isn't a lot of change. The equalized aid did drop, just slightly there. Basically, that'll mean that the levy may rise just slightly, but no real changes in the Fund 10 revenues. The next section there, excuse me, Fund 10 state revenues, the next section down is Fund 10 district revenues. Those numbers are also very similar, with the exception of line 24, Medicaid payments. Part of the new iThrive Academy will rely on Medicaid reimbursement to pay for the services of a lot of our technicians, so that will drastically increase, decrease the amount of revenue coming back to us in Medicaid. The next section down, Fund 10 grant revenues, those are all very consistent, and we'll point out in line 42, that's 215, but we actually were just notified by the state of Wisconsin, the DPI, that our allocation for our STING after-school program is going to decrease because of our number of students that are enrolled, it's going to decrease down to about 160,000. We've been spending about that the last two years, so we should be okay, but that's, our numbers are actually pretty consistent, two years in a row, but they're a little bit below what the original grant had proposed we were going to get, and that's why now they're making that correction for us. On to the next section there, Fund 10 expenses, those also remain fairly consistent, the one exception there might be line 54, transferred to Fund 27. At this point, the iThrive is being coded into Fund 27, involves a lot of special education students, that's going to increase the special education costs, that may increase the Fund 10 transfer. Otherwise, most of those are fairly consistent. Transportation, line 72 is up a little bit, you know, the contract has increased, and we have also, we've spent a lot of time working with COBUS and over the summer to try to improve the experiences for our kids, and one of the things that we're going to try this year is adding some monitors to our buses, so a driver and then another adult in the back, and we're going to try to do that kind of on a trial basis, a few in the morning and maybe a few more in the afternoon, especially for some of our in-town city stops, and COBUS and some of their other branches in Lowdy to Forest, some priority, they've found a lot of success doing that, so we're going to give that a shot this year, but that will come at an increased cost, but it should be a better experience for our students. The next section down, total grant expenses, grant expenses should in theory match the grant revenues, and those are all very similar to the year before. The next section down is Fund 27 revenue, the line 100 is down a little bit, that's, last year's was up a little bit because we used some carryover. If the state gives us X dollars each year, if you don't use those, you can carry them to the next year, so this current year, we've used a lot of carryover, next year, we'll be back to the typical amount that we usually use, which is somewhere between $400 and $450,000. So, it looks like a decrease, but it isn't really. One thing I will point out that is not in here is any sort of, it's not been calculated yet, is any sort of revenue that will come from the iThrive Academy. It's a very fluid situation at this point, how many students will be coming, but those other school districts will be paying us tuition fees, and that's not reflected in the budget yet. The Fund 27 expenses, there is one large increase, special education salaries, so a new iThrive Academy director and up to possibly nine technicians, it's certainly going to add 10 more employees, that's going to increase the special education salaries. And then, finally, down to the summaries, so the total revenues at this point, 28,648, total expenses, 28,966. This is also very fluid, but at this point, projecting just a slight deficit. Our goal is always to try to find a balanced budget, whatever the revenues that we have coming in, to try to stay inside of those, and I'm sure some of these things will sort out as we go a little bit further here into the fall. But that's a first look for some of the board members, a three or four-time look for some others. Any questions I could answer on that? All right. Thank you.
The bonds, bond proceeds update.
Okay, so as the board knows, we received our $27.16 million, a couple of different payments, we invested that with the help of PMA, but I'll let Mr. Bosworth give a little bit more detailed update on where we're at with those bond proceeds.
So, if any of you were on the board at the time when we first looked at some investment companies and we chose PMA, they were projecting, I believe it was around 1.2 million in earnings, and they told us, "We're going to estimate conservatively, but we think maybe it'll be better than that." As they have done investments for us and retract more spending, at this point, you can see in the board memo, they are projecting earnings of just under 1.4, $1,394,000. So, maybe do in part to a conservative estimate to begin with, but also probably do in part to a consistent high interest rate. Decreasing interest rate is good for some things, leaving it up is good for others, especially us earning interest on our bonds right at this moment. And just to refresh everybody's memory, we sell the bonds, the money comes to us, we have three years to spend it on the referendum projects, and we have been spending, to date, we have spent $7,670,236.82, so we've spent a good chunk of it, but while the rest of it is waiting to be spent, we can invest it and collect interest on that. But I have one thing to point out, on the first, let me see here, on the $15 million, there's a PDF there that shows the earnings on $15 million, but halfway down there, there's a number, $84,828.31. PMA calls that potential arbitrage rebate liability. So, the idea there is that the government does not like for institutions like schools to sell bonds at a certain rate and then invest the money at a different rate and actually make a profit. And they, if you borrow less than a certain dollar amount, you're allowed to keep that extra bump, so if we loaned 3.9 and earn interest at 4, we're going to make some interest there. That's the difference, that's the $84,000. Potential liability is telling us that if you don't hit these qualifiers, you could potentially have to give that back to the federal government. We work with PMA, we work with Baird, we're very confident we're going to hit all the qualifiers, and we wouldn't have to give you that liability back. And then, on the second page, I'll point out that that same number, the next PDF, instead of being $84,000, it shows $615,000, which is a little bit more alarming, which is basically all of the earnings. The reason that they put that there is that PMA, by the time they published these, which was August 7th, they hadn't received official paperwork yet from Corals, our legal advisors who helped us write and sell our bonds. They've since received that, and they'll give us an updated one, and I'm sure that dollar value is going to be much lower, but again, we're going to hit the qualifiers, and we really don't have to worry about the arbitrage anyways, I just wanted to point out what that was. All in all, projected to make 1.3 million plus, which is good.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent to agenda items as presented, motion to accept the donation of money valued at $1,872.50 from Richland Area Crime Stoppers, motion to accept the resignation of Shay Kliko, RCHS Social Studies teacher, effective August 11th to 2025, motion to accept the resignation of Grant Heim, RCPS Physical Education teacher, effective August 7th, 2025, motion to approve the hiring of Ashley Shaw as a physical education teacher for the 2025-26 school year as presented, motion to approve the hiring of Caleb Muller as a technology education teacher for the 2025-26 school year as presented, motion to approve the hiring of Daniel Polvermacher as a social studies teacher for the 2025-26 school year as presented, motion to approve the 2025-26 iThrive Academy Student and Family Handbook as presented, motion to approve the HOSA Health Occupation Students of America Skills USA Technology Education and Skills USA Culinary Baking and Pastry as probationary clubs beginning in the 2025-26 school year, motion to waive policy 5851, school events and Wednesdays, school events and Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays as presented, motion to approve eight open enrollment out applications for the 2025-26 school year as presented, and approve one open enrollment in application for the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxell, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Scher, Mr. Board, anything you want to call out here or add?
Yeah, I would just point out letter J, the waiving of 5851. The board did recently give some administrative discretion on up to 12 times. The reality is that we get a lot of requests for Culver Share Nights and a lot of requests, especially in the fall, for brat sales and things at Oakwood Food Farm, we may use up all 12 of those by the time Halloween rolls around, and so, I thought it would be in the best interest to just bring those two items to the board for full review, so that it didn't use up all of those 12 for something that might need to be acted on a little more timely manner.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Mr. Doudna?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Richland Area Crime Stoppers for their generous donation, and I also want to welcome each of our new staff members who will be joining the Hornet family, we are excited to have you. In addition, I want to extend our best wishes to those who are retiring or resigning, and thank you for your dedication for our students, school, and community. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda? Motion made by Mr. Billings, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Thompson, discussion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so, three of those positions, teaching positions, the board just approved with their consent agenda, which leaves us with just a handful of things, openings, I should say. The DFC Communities Project Coordinator, this is a position that we had posted, we are taking it down for 24 hours, and we're going to repost it tomorrow, just so that we try to recirculate, recycle, regenerate interest from the different platforms that we use. I will kind of forewarn the board that if we don't find a DFC coordinator that's qualified, we may have to look at not having it, at least through the school district. I've reached out to some of the local municipalities, they don't have a lot of interest in necessarily taking on the grant, but I don't know what else we can do as a school district if we don't have a coordinator, so just keep that in mind, that we'll do our best to try to fill that position, but we haven't had any success as of right now. Also, the Speech and Language Pathologist, the SLP, you'll see that that's listed as open. We do have a backup plan where we've contracted with either CISA III or virtual platform directly or via CISA III, so we will have SLPs in place, in person or virtually for the start of school, but we'll continue to try to search for someone at least the first couple of weeks of school, just in case we can find somebody that can be working for us, through us, and in person, that's always the best, and then, you'll see that there are a couple of support staff, custodial maintenance positions posted as well. As always, the rest of the positions that have been filled through the, since July 1st are in the outer portion of the table, but does the board have any questions, any of that information? Okay, thank you.
All right, the public visiting during school hours.
Okay, so this is just a general reminder for the board, for our public, for our parents, and our law enforcement on the rules as we start a new school year and what they can and can't do. And all four of those groups, the board, law enforcement, parents, and public, they're all bound by the same policies, right, on what they can and can't do. And our number one responsibility is to ensure that our students are safe and that we have protocols in place to ensure that that happens, as well as privacy. So, again, there are several policies listed, 9150, school visitors, 7440, 5540, 2416, as well as some state statutes that kind of have the meat and potatoes of what I'm going to try to summarize here, but kind of breaking down just the four general categories here. So, our general public, all right, our general public, they are not permitted in our school for non-public events, okay? So, obviously, if there's an athletic event, if there's a concert, if there's something that is generally considered open to the public, of course, our public is welcome, and we want as many of them as we possibly can fit into our bleachers or our auditorium or whatever the case may be. They're not permitted to just come in and show up in classroom, okay, or even wander our hallways, all right, as a general public. When our public does need to come to our schools, they must check in at the front desk, okay? We have a kiosk at each of the front desks at the primary school, the intermediate school, the high school, and then, we also have one at the district office, and so, any visitors that are visiting, our guest visitors, should check in at one of those locations, they may need to bring a photo ID, they'll get a visitor badge if they're allowed in, oftentimes, the public is just, you know, dropping something off, or can you distribute this, or whatever, but they're never allowed to, you know, come in a back door, even if students are coming in, or a side door, they must check in at the front office, and that includes volunteers as well, okay? Parents, guardians, again, we welcome parents, we welcome guardians to visit our school, we want them to be actively engaged in their child's lives, but they must also check in at the main office, and if they are going to a specific area while school is in session, perhaps they're going to a science room to see a science fair or something of that nature during school hours, they still have to check in at the offices and wear that visitor badge. Board members, they're no different, okay, unless the board as a whole specifically gives another board member the ability to go and do something in a building, all right, individually, you board members have no more power or jurisdiction than the general public, and so, all of those same rules that the general public has, you have those in place as well, okay? You're welcome to attend our school, but you need to check in at the front offices, you should schedule time with principals if you want to see something special within the buildings, and of course, keep in mind the incompatibility of offices, okay? Even if you are into a building, again, you want to see something special going on, you've arranged it with the principal, that still doesn't give an individual board member the right to go into the teachers' lounge and get all the latest gossip on the principal or how another teacher is doing, right? That's not within your discretion. And then, finally, law enforcement, again, very similar, law enforcement, they can't just barge into our schools, they have to follow protocol as well, they'll report to the office, they'll have to provide the proper identification to our front office and/or administration, they do not interview students on school grounds without us contacting the parents first, in almost all situations, sometimes there's a case where it's unlawful or compromises the integrity of their investigation. If at all possible, we would ask those law enforcement officials to take care of their business off school grounds, but sometimes, they have to, all right? The one thing that gets a little blurry is our community resource officer, we love having our community resource officer in our buildings, when he is acting in the capacity of a resource officer, he is under school jurisdiction, he can travel the halls, he can walk in and go where he needs to go, as soon as he flips, he or she, in our current case, he, as soon as he flips into a law enforcement role, an investigative role, then those same law enforcement rules apply to him, okay? So, Officer Wilson can't just pull a student out of class, take him into a conference room, and start questioning him without following our police protocol, so. Again, we've not had any major issues with this, but with it being the start of the school year, I wanted to just give those general reminders, not just for our board, but for all of those groups of individuals, so. A lot of the information is in the board memo there, but happy to try to answer any questions for you that you may have, or if something comes up later, you're certainly welcome to email me and we'll get those answers addressed. I want everybody to be able to visit our schools, but do so in the proper format.
In an instance of a threat, is there a way for the officers to bypass the district office to contain the threat, if there is one?
Outside law enforcement?
Yes.
To bypass? Yeah, we would, yes, we would be in communication with them immediately, and they would not have to check in, we would then be under a special situation, and they would be able to come in because we would be letting them have that jurisdiction. Yep, question? Any others? Okay, thank you.
On to action items, the referendum update and change orders.
Okay, so, referendum update, I'm just going to kind of walk through, very similar to how Mr. Bosworth did with the budget, just going to kind of walk through the numbers in the memo, and then, provide a couple of different updates here when we get done. Actually, you know what, I think I'm going to start with a couple Actually, you know what, I think I'm going to start with a couple of the updates and then get to the numbers. Okay, first of all, there was an accident at the primary school last week. They were setting the trusses for the 5K classrooms, there are four 5K classrooms, and the trusses collapsed before they were able to get them fully secured, okay? Very fortunate that no one was severely injured. That is in the hands of Nexus and their subcontractors and OSHA, and that's under an investigation, so I can't necessarily show you any pictures or any of those things at this point, but the big thing is, we're, again, very fortunate, no one was injured on site, or at least not severely injured. One was sent to the hospital and then released moments later. From a timeline standpoint, that does set us back about two weeks. The trusses had to be reordered, and they are scheduled to be here, I believe, next week, and then they will resume setting the trusses, okay? That area has been entirely secured, so while they're doing that work with students present, our students and staff are safe as well. Final asphalt layer was being laid today. You may have noticed at the primary school that the first layer may have been laid, was laid on Thursday, Friday. If you drove by it over the weekend, that final layer is being laid today. That will, we'll be able to drive on that, and Cobeson will be able to do dry runs if they need to, starting on Thursday. We've got great weather for asphalt's lane, so that should allow it to cure nice and firm. And then at the end of this week, striping will be put in on there so that we've got good traffic flow as well as signage. And then lastly, at the primary school, we've got a lot of smaller projects that are still being completed, many of them will be completed this week, but, you know, there was never the intention of having everything ready to go by September 2nd, okay? We wanted to have a bit major things done, major things are likely going to be done outside of those four classrooms, but there's still some odds and ends that have to be done. We have not gone through a punch list with them. There may be some, you know, ceiling tile in one room that needs to be fixed, you know, some wiring that needs to be completed, painting that might need to be completed. All of that can be done while students are in session and doesn't impact the educational environment. So, again, I don't want anybody to think that on Friday, everything was supposed to be done, the big stuff's supposed to be done. Because of that accident and the delay in the trusses, the air conditioning at the primary school is likely going to also be delayed, okay, because some of the duct work needed to go into those four classrooms, and that can't be completed until the trusses are on there. So instead of what we were thinking would be first or second day of school, the students in session, probably looking at now the third week in September, but they have assured us they will work as hard as they can and get that done. And again, I'm happy to wait three weeks, knowing that no one got hurt, and we're going to have this thing for the next five, so small price to pay on waiting. Moving over to the intermediate school, a little bit of asphalt work that needs to be done over at the intermediate school that may have gotten to today, likely tomorrow. We're going to stripe the parking lot at the intermediate school as well, that's temporary striping, just to organize traffic flow and parking. Next summer, they'll come in and they'll resurface and reseal, resurface the areas that need to be resurfaced and then reseal everything, and then they'll provide the more permanent striping. But we will have some striping there at the intermediate school to help with that traffic flow as well. Restrooms on the south end of the building, near the gym, those will be completed sometime in October, and then once those restrooms are fully functional and open, then, again, they'll strategically be shutting down restrooms throughout the building, and that's one of the things they'll be working on throughout the school year at the intermediate school. With that, there won't be a lot, but there may be some entrance restrictions on that gym entrance, okay, that south entrance. We may have to divert some folks around tonight, there was a volleyball scrimmage, I believe they were coming in through the main doors. As things are going on down there, we may have to divert folks from that entrance in the gym to another entrance, but there shouldn't be any major setbacks, just maybe a few more steps. Before we get to the budget, any questions on the general project updates at the intermediate school or primary school? Okay, now focusing more on the memo, here's the budget updates with as concrete numbers as we have. So that first section there, at the top underneath the budget update, you'll see that we had a savings from the Richland Center High School roofing project, that number has not changed. You'll see that we had a slightly higher, okay, the red means we're over budget, plus we're over budget, not necessarily to the good, but over budget. We were over budget at the primary school by about $437,000, not million. We were under budget by almost $900,000 at the intermediate school. And then our contingency adjustment, that's the contingency that we have there, anytime there's a small change order, things come in slightly under what they thought for contingency or slightly over, that number gets adjusted. And so that puts us kind of, as our big projects go, under budget, okay, or a savings of about 1.6 million, all right? Then, that next section, board-approved project additions or subtractions, and you'll see over to the right the date that the board took action on these four upgrades, okay? The high school IMC came in at a tune of about $270,000, the intermediate school IMC about $136,000, and the primary school IMC at about $230,000. High school is obviously done, primary school is almost done, they're waiting on just a couple of fixtures that should come in next week, and then that will be finished up, and the intermediate school will be this week and next week as well, hoping by the start of school, we may trickle into the start of school just by a couple of days. Those were all board-approved earlier with the intention that if there was money left over in the referendum, to take it out of the referendum dollars first. If there wasn't, then we would be looking at fund balance or another method. And then the fourth thing on there was, at our last board meeting, the board approved the initial fee for the McKinstry Group, the asset management group, just under $100,000 there. So that leaves board commitments to the tune of about $737,000. So if you subtract that or remove that from the under budget, that leaves us under budget $874,000, okay? Then, down at the bottom, our other possible projects or budgets to consider, so that you have a full scope of where we're at. Soil corrections at the primary school, okay? Our latest estimates from the excavators is that that's going to be $499,000. They have a couple of things yet to tweak on that, and so we don't have the final, final number on that. So what I've asked the board to consider approving tonight, if you look at the motion, is to approve the change order for soil corrections at the primary school in an amount not to exceed $525,000. That way, if it comes in at 508, we don't have to wait and come back to the board. Significant, significant soil corrections needed to be done, more than what we thought would happen, but again, these had to be done in order to have a good foundation for our classrooms as well as the parking lot and not have to redo things here a little bit. So that's something that the board will look at here in just a couple of minutes. And then there are three things that you'll notice over to the right in blue, it says waiting on bids. These were things that were considered that we wanted to get a price on, either through the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee or administratively, to see what does it cost? What would it cost to do bathroom upgrades at our three public bathrooms here at the high school and do full bathroom upgrades, as opposed to just new sinks and a new countertop? What does it look like to do full remodels? That's the budget number, but our Buildings and Property said, go ahead and go take that out to bid and see what it actually comes in at, and then the board and/or the committee could determine at that point, okay? So that's a placeholder for budget. We will be putting bids out, and we will bring those bid numbers back. The same would be true for the bus lane improvements, trying to get the most efficient and safe bus routes, bus parking at our intermediate school. Nexus is telling us that's probably going to be about $200,000 to $250,000. We're putting that out for bid to get an actual number that the board can then consider. And then, primary school and intermediate school painting upgrades, this is not something, this happened after our last Buildings and Property Committee, but I'm sharing it with the full board. Going through our main hallways at our primary school and our intermediate school, those could really use a fresh coat of paint, they've got fresh lighting on, and in these areas, we can't afford to probably do every classroom with painting, but if we can get our main hallways and our public areas so that it really looks like a fresh coat of paint, it's amazing what a fresh coat of paint does, with epoxy paint, something that's going to be durable, with an orange and black stripe that is similar to what's down the athletic hallway here at the high school, that would be great, okay? So we've instructed them to just give us a price. I don't know if it's going to be $23,000 or $93,000, but they've told us, put in a placeholder of $60,000, okay? So again, those three items, we're waiting on bids for, those are budgetary placeholders for those, and then the board can determine what they want to do once those bids actually come in. Hive drive improvements, I originally said that we were holding a $200,000 placeholder for that. The final numbers, bids came in at just under about $330,000, $340,000, somewhere in there. That's something that we're going to partner with the city on, going to be working with the city administrator to move that forward. Our portion would be half of that, so that $167,000 is half of what the total price would be for the hive drive improvements, which would include curb and gutter and sidewalk down hive drive, as well as lighting, so that it's lit at night, okay? So that's all of that. So if you take all of those things, and if, again, the board has not acted on some of these things yet, or any of these things at this point, if you add all of those up with the budgetary numbers in there, that means the amount of extra projects is about 1.3 million, okay? That would put us over budget by about $472,000, which is that last red line in the memo. However, Mr. Bosworth just presented to the board that the estimated bond proceeds are just shy of 1.4 million. That number is reflected on that second to the last line there, which means that, all things considered, the board could approve, I'm not asking you to approve anything other than to consider the soil correction number, but they could approve any of those budgetary numbers that are listed there, get full high school bathroom remodels, improve the bus lane, get some painting upgrades, and do hive drive, or at least our portion of it, using those bond proceeds, and still have just over $900,000 left when you put all of that together for other projects, so. I apologize, that was a lot of speaking, but I wanted to make sure that you've had a good picture. So any questions on the numbers, and then I'll talk one more time just on the soil correction orders and what we're looking for for a motion. Any questions?
Do we know when those bids are going to be coming back for the other projects?
I don't have the exact timeline, I would suspect late September, early October. Okay, so any other questions? Okay, all right, so then, we do have the change event for the soils corrections. Again, we do not have a final number. I was told by Nexus today that the latest number that they had was $499,000 and some change. I'm asking the board to approve a change order not to exceed $525,000, just to give a little bit of cushion for that. Again, just remember, anything over $150,000 has to come directly to the board for approval. So that would be what we would be asking the board to approve tonight. I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Eman.
Is there a motion to approve the change event for soil corrections, the RCPS, for an amount not to exceed $525,000? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Traxel, any discussion?
Could you touch on what takes place for the soil corrections, or whatever stands up?
Yeah, I would love so. If the board president would allow, I would like Mr. Jones maybe to come up and speak on that, if you're okay with that?
I'll allow.
Okay. Mr. Jones, would you be willing to come up and talk, Mr. Dowdner's question a little bit more on what they really did down there? Thank you.
So they found in spots up to 12 feet of bad soil, so they removed it. And then they bring in base courses of, I would say it's gravel, thicker actually, it's not riprap, but smaller, larger rock, that comes in first, and then courses of gravel. Along with that, they lay fabric down, and then lay another course and more fabric. So that's basically it, as far as I know. During that whole time, they had, I think it was Chosen Valley, folks that do the soil testing, monitoring this and telling them which way to proceed and which way not to proceed throughout the whole process. And that was true of the kindergarten area and then the parking lot area.
So what does that bad soil mean?
Lot of clay, just hole in water. You could literally walk across it and feel it under your feet, it was so bad. When they got done, you could drive trucks over and remove.
So essentially, it's water runoff control to help with that?
That's part of it, yes. But the other part is, is to give a good base for the parking lot, so 10 years down the road, you won't be doing it again.
I don't know if it should be involved hauling out, hauling in?
If you couldn't keep up with the rock here at the quarry at points, you'd have to bring it in from out of town or other quarries.
A lot of riffing. Anything else for the man that can probably answer most of those questions? Thanks, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
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 Aye. To the creation of ad hoc construction capital referendum projects committee?
Okay, so these next four agenda topics mostly will be led by Mr. Eman, trying to give just a high-level view, as the board has talked about, these policy governance model and possibly creating committees for very specific purposes and specific durations, and then meet more often as a board in lieu of committee meetings to focus on the governance of the school board. That's what these next four topics are looking at, kind of strategically, not strategically, systematically in order, if the board was to look at doing all of these things, it would be looking at creating an ad hoc committee to focus specifically on the construction and capital referendum projects. And that committee would be very similar to what the BPT did, but focused specifically on those capital improvement projects as it relates. Instead of having it be one of six agenda items, it would be one meeting focused all on that. And then likely, if that was the way it would take place, then the board would transfer the power that they gave the BPT to that ad hoc committee. And then again, if that goes through, then possibly look at dissolving the standing committees. We have four standing committees, curriculum assessment, public relations, policy, personnel and budget development, and then Buildings, Property, and Transportation, those are standing committees. Those would be dissolved, potentially dissolved under this model, which would leave us then with just the ad hoc committee, that would be focusing on the capital projects and the referendum dollars, and that would live as long as there were still referendum dollars and projects to be considered. Any new ad hoc committees could be created at any given time by the board to focus on specific things. And then third would be to look at taking that Wednesday night where there's committee meetings and replacing that with the entire board meets. meetings and replacing that with the entire board meets under a special board meeting for policy governance work, on how the board is going to function, and what they want to keep within their control, what they're willing to relinquish, and if they're willing to relinquish it, what are the guardrails? One topic might be very narrow guardrails for the administration, others might be a little bit wider with reports to the committee, others might be extremely wide, we don't care, just do what you think is best. And then finally, potentially looking at moving the regularly scheduled board meetings to Wednesday nights. So that's kind of an overview of the next four topics. I can go into a little bit more detail as we get to each one. This first one, however, is the creation of an ad hoc construction capital referendum project committee. And again, an ad hoc committee would focus on a specific topic, and it would be, it would live as long as the need for that topic to continue. So in this case, focusing on the referendum projects. If so, the board president could appoint board members to be on that, and then they would focus on everything related to that referendum and have the same jurisdiction that the Buildings and Property. With that, I think I'll just turn it over to you, and you can go from there, Mr. Amiyan, answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you covered it pretty well. This would be pretty much the first step in going down a different governance model path. So what we're looking for here is to create an ad hoc committee, like Mr. Board said, that's specifically focused on those construction and capital referendum projects. If there's no action to be needed, or no real updates, it wouldn't necessarily be probably a monthly meeting, it would be meeting as needed. And also with that, too, the current board members that are on that committee, I would just reappoint to this ad hoc committee as well. So, Mr. Miller, Ms. Traxel, and Mr. Dowdner would be appointed to that committee as well. Are there any questions from board members? No? All right, I'm looking for a motion then to establish ad hoc construction capital referendum projects committee, consisting of Mr. Dowdner, Ms. Traxel, and Mr. Miller, as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mrs. Sharp, discussion?
It would just add one thing, if this passes, we have a Buildings and Property Committee scheduled to meet on Wednesday. This would probably repost that for this ad hoc committee to take the place and meet on Wednesday at 5:30.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 On to dissolution of standing committees.
Okay, so again, the idea here would be that now there is, we have five committees, at least for the time being. We have this ad hoc construction capital committee, so the four standing committees, if the board wanted to free up a night to work on policy governance, this would be one of the ways that they could do that, with the idea that most, if not all, of the information that typically goes to committee would just come straight to the board. And we wouldn't be leaving the board out of anything, it would just come straight to the board, possibly for information and then action, or just for action. You know, turn that back over to you, Mr. Amiyan.
Yeah, so, just to echo what Mr. Board said, the current committees, what goes to committees, would go straight to the board. How it's probably going to look and feel for a period of time is, it'd be information and discussion unless immediate action needs to be taken. It would allow the board not to discuss these items, potentially several times prior to a board meeting, hopefully engage in discussion in an open meeting session. And if action needs to be taken, it would most likely, if there was no issues with as information and discussion, or follow-ups needed from administration, you would probably just go to consent agenda in the following board meeting. So, from a transparency perspective, there would be no loss of transparency, you would be bringing it straight to the board, board members coming prepared to have conversation, and have meaningful discussion and take action as needed. Anything required by policy or laws, obviously, you come to the board regardless, if we had a committee or not. Another thing with this also is, the risk of walking quorums at a committee level is much greater than a board level, so by dissolving these committees, it does offer some flexibility at the board level to maybe talk about something without, you know, risking a walking quorum and violating open laws. Yeah, that's kind of the gist of it. Are there any questions from myself or Mr. Board?
Will there need to be any changes to any of our current policies, aside to dissolve these?
I haven't 100% gone through all of them, but what I'm finding initially is that likely not, because our committees don't necessarily have any power unless it's specifically given to them by the board anyway, like the board gave the Buildings and Property Committee the ability to approve change orders up to $150,000. Otherwise, they're really just a precursor step that really doesn't have any true power. Even if they vote it down, it can still go to the full board, so it doesn't, I don't believe, I've come across any policies at this point that require revision, but I'm going to continue to do a review on them.
And I'll just add the comment that I, I'm not in support of this right now, I was, my thoughts were to get through the strategic planning before we went this, these steps here, so I'm just not going to support it at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Comments, concerns? All right, hearing none then, is there a motion to dissolve all standing committees of the Board of Education, retaining only the ad hoc construction capital referendum projects committee as presented, effective immediately?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Traxel, discussion?
Aye.
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 Special board meetings for policy governance.
Okay, so now, tearing things down, kind of building it back up, so now the thought would be that, take that Wednesday of the month, and let it be for policy governance, the board would meet as a whole. Because it wasn't scheduled at a reorganization meeting, they would all be considered special board meetings, thus the reason for the special board meeting, we would just have standing and special meeting. The memo is written so that it is the first Wednesday of the month, doesn't have to be that, but certainly could be, which would mean that we would potentially meet as a board, a special board meeting for first policy governance review, depending on the date on September 3rd, but again, that date could change as well. Okay, Mr. Amiyan, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yes, this is kind of the next steps, with the recent passings of the other action items on its next agenda. This is kind of a way for the board to define, you know, what we want to be. It's definitely a deviation from how the board's always been focused, where their attention is, and how they've operated. However, this is going to give the board and administration ultimately the time to focus on the things that really matter. But again, in the interim, until we go down this road, establish some policies, some guardrails, as we refer to them, nothing's going to change. There won't be any less transparency than we have today. Everything, like I said, I stated earlier, we come to, you know, information and discussion unless it was really, really time sensitive. Everything that we currently do today, we will still continue doing tomorrow. This is going to take a lot of time, so I would anticipate nothing really changing for quite a period of time. And again, as a board, we have, you know, this is our, this is a meeting of the board, and we have, this also will be a meeting of the board as well, to define, you know, what those are. So, we will most likely be monthly, as Mr. Board stated, it would be in replacement of our current policies, or in our policy committee meetings, using that full time as a board to engage these questions, going through our current policies, deciding what is relevant as far as board control, what can just be, you know, pushed to administration and say, you guys manage this day-to-day stuff. That's kind of the purpose of this, and as we move into the strategic planning next year, this obviously is just going to set the stage for that, give us some time and experience, because it's going to be new to all of us, we're going to learn as we go. And then like the prior, we would just keep establishing ad hoc committees as we learn the goals and priorities of our community, district, et cetera. So, this is allowing us time as a board to do the grunt work, to start working on our policies, to become a more policy-driven board. Are there any questions? I know it's a lot, I know it's a new concept.
Yes, I'm just wondering, having it on the first Wednesday of the month versus the third, since our current meeting schedule is more in the middle of the month, we had committee meetings set up for the, I don't know what point, it was the Wednesday before the fourth, or the second?
Yep.
Or I mean, whatever, I don't want to say that. I don't think there's going to be any holidays or anything like that that would interfere with the beginning of the month part of it, just maybe more of having it be more consistent with what we have been currently doing.
Yeah, it really doesn't matter to me. In my head, the thought was, you do get a few fifth Wednesdays, and so you would naturally break them up, whereas if it's, you know, if the change in letter E happens to the second and the fourth, you would always have second, third, fourth. That was my thought process, but it's up to the board on when they meet.
Are there any other board members that have the same feelings, Mr. Miller? Do we want to change the, should we go down this road and have the motion, the second? Do we want to change the date for the Wednesday of the month, or the first Wednesday, fine?
I won't give a thought, there was just a question in the background for it.
Are there any other questions from folks? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to approve special board meetings on the first Wednesday of each month, commencing on September 3rd, 2025, for policy governance review as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Thompson, discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. And on to the change in regularly scheduled board meeting dates.
Okay, this last one doesn't necessarily have anything to do with policy governance, but with some talk at the last board meeting to potentially move them to Wednesday, proposal here is the second and fourth Wednesday, just for whatever it's worth, as I was kind of reviewing, like what actually works better. There are some benefits to having it on Wednesday. As I mentioned before, there's hardly ever, if ever, scheduling conflicts, I know that we try to avoid things on Mondays, but especially in the spring when we get weather delays and rainouts, as well as some things in the fall. There's some things on Mondays that may conflict with board member schedules, so that's probably one of the biggest review, or one of the biggest benefits. Improve prep time, you know, having them on Mondays, when we publish the books on Thursday afternoon or Friday, requires board members to be reviewing a lot of the information on the weekend, and sometimes that, if they're looking for an answer, then that requires administration to be checking emails on the weekend to be able to answer those questions so that you can be prepared to vote on a Monday. Having it in the middle of the week allows you not only the weekend to review if you have time, but then ample time at the beginning of the week to get those questions answered to you. And then just systematically, now that you've approved the special board meetings on Wednesdays, to go the first, second, and fourth regularly scheduled meetings, you'd have the third week off and the fifth week off for any special meetings that the board may need to have, or just truly have it off. I did update this memo, if you looked at it Friday or over the weekend, I did update it today. At least one board member can't make the September 10th work, and so the adjusted recommendation is to start this change on Wednesday, September 24th, and have our last regularly scheduled meeting be on Monday, the 8th, and then make that transition to the Wednesdays if so approved. I think I hit all the highlights, Mr. Amiyan.
Yes, thank you. There was still a standing question from our prior meeting, if this was a hard no for availability for many board members to come to the meeting tonight, and just, if you can't, if you can't do it for work, or whatever the reason may be, now's the time to bring it up.
Monday and Wednesdays are both hard days, so I kind of like having that middle of the week downtime afterward, you know, but I have heard both sides from people, some saying it's a good idea, some saying no.
Anybody else have any conflicts with changing it to Wednesday? Is this something that everybody is, for the most part, fine with going forward on? No other conflicts? Hard no's? All right, is there a motion to approve moving the regularly scheduled board meetings for the rest of the '25, '26 school year, from the second and fourth Mondays of the month to the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, commencing on September 24th, 2025, as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Bailey, discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Traxel, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mrs. Sharp, discussion?
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.